Roll call of the members, Councilor Riggo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowosowski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Penta.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting Held on February 13, 2012. Calendar item.
Mr. President?
Council Powers.
I'd like to ask everyone to stand in a moment of silence for Grace Barasso, who passed away this Saturday in Florida. She was the wife of Anthony Barasso, who was the cousin of former City Council President Joseph Elgrasso. Thank you.
Calendar item number one is the first meeting in a series of monthly meetings between Comcast, Verizon, and National Grid to discuss various utility work throughout the city of Revere.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The reason this motion was put in is actually a motion of mine to have the utility companies come here once a month so we can get some results because it didn't work doing anything else and just talking. So that's why I've asked them to come here, and it seems like since we've asked you to come here, some work has been getting done, double polls or not. But if they can have the utility companies come to the podium, state their name and what company they're from. Don't see anybody here. Oh. Put the mic.
I'm here for the petition for Ocean Abbot. I was unaware of anything about double polls or anything.
Okay, you asked and requested a coming by the City Council. Probably a letter probably went out over a month ago, but, okay. Okay.
My name is Stan Yusevich. I'm with Verizon. My office is at 63 High Street in Davis. I did hear from Dan Cameron of National Grid. He's on his way. He was held up at a job site not too far away. Should be about 10 minutes.
Do you mind if we go on to next calendar item and do you get the way families show up?
No, actually, I can give you an update on where everything is at.
All right, but I'd hate to go through this twice with the utility companies. They're both at the same time.
You don't necessarily have to.
I'd appreciate if you would let me go on to the next calendar, and when he gets here, we'll bring you up again.
Very good.
Thank you.
Calendar item number two, a certificate of appreciation will be presented to Vinnie's Market and the Prezioso family in celebration of their 35 years doing business in the city of Revere.
So this motion was put in by myself and Councilor Patch for the Prezioso family. Growing up in Ward Six, Vinnie's Market's been a really big part of our community and definitely a staple in the neighborhood and a really great thing to have. So we're really grateful for it and, you know, thank you. A lot of memories from my childhood are going to and from Vinnie's in the greenhouse. So it really is special, and we have a certificate of appreciation for you. And it reads, "Revere Certificate of Appreciation. The city of Revere congratulates you as your family celebrates 35 years of dedicated service to your business and the community. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Vinnie's Market and the Prezioso family. This certificate of appreciation is presented by the City Council of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens this 27th day of February in the year of our Lord 2012 and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 235th." So, thank you very much.
Thank everybody, all the members of the City Council.
Thank you.
I just want to say a few words. Since I moved into the Ward Six about 39 years ago, I raised my family there, and they, the family, the family took very good care of my kids. It was their convenience store that you don't see too around too often anymore, and they've always had that friendly attitude and just want to help you. And it's good to know that my two boys have bought houses not too far from the store to have young families and that they'll be able to continue with the same friendly atmosphere, maybe a boot and a fanny when they need it. But they just, it's so good to see that a small business like that can survive in today's economy. And they've had to make some changes in that smart business, and I just want to hope that they're there for many more years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I just want to thank everybody, the whole City Council and the citizens of Revere, all the customers all around the neighborhoods and everything. Thank you very much. Hope for many more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for, when I think about Revere, because I don't live here anymore. I moved to the South Shore. But I want to share with you a little story about the Blizzard of '78. I'm sure you all remember that. And when people ask me on the South Shore, where do you, where did you grow up? Who were the people? Who were the citizens of your town? I tell them the story about how Vinnie's Food Market came to become a part of the city because we were new, a new business in Revere at the time. And what happened with the Blizzard of '78 is, you know, we got snowed in and people didn't have access to food. And I remember my brother Angelo and I ordering, triple ordering, quadruple ordering all the food and being put on cable and letting people know that Vinnie's Food Market would be there to support the community in that time because people didn't have access to supermarkets. And I remember people coming with piggy banks because they had ran out of funds, and my dad, who's here in spirit this evening, as is my mother, said, "Do not break that piggy bank. Get what you need from the store." The prices remained the same, and we were not disappointed if people took food that they needed to feed their families, and everyone came back and paid my dad. And it was a big, it's a big reflection of who the citizens of Revere are. You are a wonderful group of human beings with a heart and soul, and you've welcomed my family, and you've praised us with your patronage, and we hope that we've done the same service to you all. Thank you.
Hold it, the certificate up.
Calendar item number three, a certificate of appreciation will be awarded to Harold Landry in recognition of his 31 years of service to the cities of Revere and Chelsea as Assistant Clerk-Majesty of the Chelsea District Court.
This motion was put in by a couple of councils and graciously let the whole council put their name on this motion, but Jessa is the only female council here. I'm going to let her read the certificate, but I think everybody wants to say a few words for Harold afterwards, so.
Thank you. So this reads, "Revere Certificate of Appreciation. In acknowledgement of his retirement from 31 years of dedicated and exemplary commendable public service, he is provided to the cities of Revere and Chelsea as Assistant Clerk-Majesty of the Chelsea District Court. Special recognition is hereby awarded to Harold Landry. This certificate of appreciation is presented by the City Council of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens this 27th day of February in the year of our Lord 2012 and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 235th."
Thank you very much.
I want to thank the entire council. I'm honored and humbled by this acknowledgement of his retirement. Thank you very much.
Is the other guy here? Is the other guy here? Utility company? Well, let's take stand then.
Mr. President?
Council Correggio.
I'd like to suspend rules at this time and take up calendar item number 14.
On suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed, so vote it.
Calendar item number 14 is a motion presented by Councilors Correggio and Guanasso that they may request the city solicitor and site plan review to draft an ordinance regulating the number and placement of satellite dishes on buildings.
I think Council Correggio took this up my fault. We have Sal Lamatina from East Boston Ward One, Council, one of my projets that I work along very well with, where we border towns, and I want to thank you, Sal, because you've never got recognition in the open in Revere, for me, so. Sal is basically here on the motion, I think, to add to Council Correggio. I'll give Council Correggio the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been brought to my attention for numerous residents through the city of Revere for satellite dishes. The city of Boston is already trying to adapt an ordinance to establish something about these dishes on buildings, any type of building. Basically, you take an apartment building, sometimes there's 10 or 15 or 20 of these dishes all around the building in the front, and it's really kind of ruining the neighborhood. It's not academically pleasing to these neighborhoods with these dishes. So I think we need to put something in place to try to control dishes on these buildings, especially apartment buildings. I have to commend Boston City Councilor Sal Lamatina, who spearheaded this in the city of Boston. He's working very hard on this, and I think in the next couple of days, he's going to the FCC in Washington to take that forward over there. But Sal has a lot of information that he can enlighten us in the city of Revere. I do want to see some type of an ordinance established to be able to have this in place and not, you know, to keep the neighborhoods, to beautify the neighborhoods the best we can. So I'd like to hear a little bit from Boston City Councilor Sal Lamatina, who is a great city councilor, he's doing a lot for the city of Boston, and just to give us an insight a little bit what they're doing over there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Correggio. Before I bring Sal up, Council Guanasso, co-mayor of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's not necessary, it's not common, but if anyone were to traverse the city of Revere and look at the unsightly manner in which these satellites are occurring, one home, seven dishes on it, right in the front of its property, what are we doing? But the major thing that I think that will bring this into play, if we could downsize the amount of satellites coming into our community just by creating an ordinance that will control where these satellites go, maybe and maybe then Verizon would come into Revere and try to compete with Comcast for the cable business. Verizon has their leadership, and when they have their membership go out and review our community, they see so many satellite dishes when they know that these people aren't going to convert over to another cable system. So they're not going to put forward all the monies necessary to be competitive with Comcast. So what do we have? It's the only reason I could figure that Verizon didn't come into our community. For what other reason? They know that the market is limited based on these satellites. They know that they'll only get a certain percentage of Comcast users to convert to Verizon. So we do city a service twice. Number one, we get rid of an unsightly view of our community. I mean, we were making so much commotion a year ago regarding dishes up in a particular building on Broadway. But I think more of an eyesore is going throughout the community and see all these ugly dishes all over the place. I mean, it just has to, something has to be that we adopt an ordinance that provides for the aesthetic value of our city to thrive, not to be one that's a, well, it's a, it's a freedom of right, they can do what they want. We have to put, because it's out of control, we have to put some certain provisions within our law through the means of an ordinance. And I think that with the effort of Sal Lamatina that's offering to the Boston City Council, we take and review exactly what he's presented to the Boston City Council, and then we could tweak it to the best of our needs and go forward with a great ordinance that I think will be beneficial to our residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Correggio. Sal?
Good evening, Mr. President. It's an honor to be here in Revere City Council. Councilor Correggio and Councilor Guanasso, thank you for inviting me here today. I've been working on this issue now in the Boston City Council for three years, tried to control the blight in the neighborhoods, and you'll see in the package that's being handed out that you have in front of you is an ordinance that I will be filing on Wednesday. I have been working on this for three years, working with the satellite companies to try to address the issues of the placement of satellite dishes in our neighborhoods and particularly in the cities. What I'm trying to do is very simple, is ban the satellite dishes from the front facades of the homes and houses. And you'll see pictures in your package of some of the neighborhoods in East Boston where you'll see many, many of these satellite dishes. There's a lawsuit pending with the FCC in regards to the city of Philadelphia. Philadelphia banned satellite dishes in the front facades of their residential units in Philadelphia. And we knew that once they did that, that satellite companies would sue the lawsuit to stop them. I have been working patiently with the satellite companies in East Boston to come up with a pilot program where they would come to East Boston, and the satellite dishes that are no longer being subscribed or in use, they would remove them and recycle them and relocate them at these homes. Satellite companies don't want to do that. What I'm trying to do is very simple. Satellite companies should be responsible for the placement and removal, and right now, there isn't. And right now, with the FCC rulings, they adopt this over-the-air reception devices, it really makes it hard for cities and towns to put any restrictions on these companies. What I'm doing is very simple. If you can't receive a signal from the satellite, then go right ahead, put it in on the front facade. I have no problem with that, so we're not breaking the law with the FCC. And so they're not being very responsive. So we're going to Washington. I got invited by the city of Philadelphia to testify at the FCC, just to have them understand the rules and regulations in the FCC from 1996. In 1996, there weren't many satellite dishes in our neighborhoods and our cities. So I'm hoping that they will see some of the pictures, videos that we have, and work with, work with the cities. It's a big issue in East Boston and a lot of other cities. Even landlords right now are complaining because once these satellite dishes are up there, it's a lot of money to remove them. I'm trying to put the ordinance, make satellite companies responsible, and they should be responsible for the installation and the removals. So I don't know if there's any questions that you have. I know that we've been, for three years, working patiently on this issue.
Sal, I thank you, thank for your hard work and putting this together. You'll make our job probably easier. I'm going to send this to Legislative Affairs, Posse Zoning, the Joint Committees on this and so we can read through this, and like I said, we have to change some language from Boston Revere and stuff like that.
Sure.
But I appreciate, I know you're always there when I call you, and I want to thank you against that. Council Haas.
You know, this may be a good opportunity, where Sal's going to be presenting it, to come up with a resolution that we, Revere City Councilors, support his endeavors. Because if he is successful, we're going to coteal this, there's no question.
Well, I tend to agree. I mean, Boston's Boston, Revere's Revere. I'd like to go through this myself. I don't think anybody has a chance. We just got it tonight. That's why I think it's probably wise to go to a committee.
Yeah, and there's other cities. We got a phone call from New Bedford that's looking at this too, Newark. They're looking at this proposal. So there's a lot of others. Chicago is looking at this.
And Sal, can you keep us updated on?
Yes, and actually, National League of Cities is signing on too. So they put some comments with the city of Philadelphia's lawsuit.
Thank you.
So I appreciate being able to present this to you. I hope that you will come up with your own ordinance to prohibit these satellite dishes in the front facade as a quality of life issues. And you'll see at some locations, if you look at some of the pictures, they're blocking windows. So if there's an emergency or fire, it's a public safety issue. And then we also, we're addressing when they're over the public way. So that's how we're going to look at this issue. So thank you, and I appreciate your time to be.
Thank you.
Testify.
On the motion, I sent it to Joint Committees of Zoning and Legislative Affairs. All in favor, all opposed, so vote it. I want to go back, I believe, to utility companies, I hear. Stan, thank you for waiting patiently.
I had to run out and turn my phone on. Dan Cameron, I'll let him introduce himself for the record.
I'm Dan Cameron with National Grid, with offices at 170 Medford Street, Malden, Mass.
Just to give a quick report on what we have, I pulled all the locations of the polls that since September 1st that have been eliminated from the double poll list, and there are 157 as of this morning that were eliminated since September 1st. Currently, we have 62 in ball and court for the electric company, and Dan can speak to that. There's one street light, 34 ball and courts for fire alarm, two private cable, and six are fiber, private fiber, 15 cable television, and 30 for the phone company. So there has been tremendous progress made, and I attribute that to, first, the council's efforts, and secondly, the council and the city becoming part of the PLM database, which makes tremendous difference in terms of who's up and at what stages of removal all the work is at.
Thank you, Dan.
As Stan said, in our ball and court here, we're at 63, and we are actively working on this and would expect that the majority of these would be done over the next several months, where we could then, once our work is done, of course, then it transfers over to fire alarm and walks through the process. There's a couple on here that, two or three that'll involve a little bit more work with commercial customers and so forth, but we are on it. Although we didn't, you know, we had a good winter and so forth with weather, but this is something we'll be attacking this spring.
I think, I'll open up the councils. Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the outset, so as not to be remiss, I'd like to thank Mr. Cameron for his work getting the pole down on Lancaster and the Linway back in service, and I'm not sure about the pole and the light in Oak Island. Could you elaborate on that? Do you know if that's been done yet? On, I think it's pole 2600.
Unfortunately, I wasn't. I was tied up on an incident and went through a ball day today, but that is in the queue to get done.
Yeah, that's 2600.
It should be done this week, right. It's a missing light, yes.
Now, if I may, sir, Mr. Yusevich, I have two issues that I'd like to bring to your attention this evening. One is a pole that is leaning very hazardly down on Dunn Road near the intersection of Sagamore Street. And that pole is in a similar condition to the one that was, fell over several months ago down in Oak Island and could have seriously injured many people in addition to the loss of power down there for several hours.
That's done? D-U-N-N?
Done, yeah, D-U-N-N, yeah. I hope, I hope it is going to get done.
Same here.
And then I have one other issue that troubles me, and I'm not sure exactly where it is. I know it's on Charmont Street. Donald Goodwin, the Superintendent of Public Works, has told me that there is in fact a situation there where a utility pole has gone through a drain down there. Are you familiar with that?
No, I'm not.
You're not? Okay.
If he could give me a call and I'll, if the clerk does not have my contact information, I'll leave that.
Yeah, because that's an area that's seriously prone to flooding. And I will have Mr., I'll speak with Mr. Goodwin tomorrow and be sure that he gets in touch with you. Would you have your phone number, please, for the record?
Yep. It's 978-750-5656.
5656. So he'll be in touch with you, if not tomorrow, then certainly this week.
I'll pass it on to operations.
Okay, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. Council Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Mr. Cameron, thank you for all your help. You've been very productive in the last couple of months in some of those issues that we've been talking about, and they have been accomplished, and I thank you very much for those, you know, yeoman's work in that. As far as Verizon is concerned, Stan and I, we've been talking, emailing each other for the last two months or so, and I've given you my list of things that need attention. Two specific ones, the pole 3310 at Centennial Avenue, it's been empty, you know, number one, first of all, it wasn't even on your PLM list.
Right.
For many, many years, and that's been there for at least six or seven years.
Yeah, we did a survey as a result of our meetings.
Right, and I know, you know, everybody's off it, and we're just waiting for that pole to come down.
Okay.
The other one is at the corner of North Shore Road and Elliott Road. That's been up there for four years. Nobody's on it now. I'm sorry, Verizon's on it.
Okay.
Still on it.
And that's a double pole?
That's a double pole.
On North Shore?
That's been like that for almost two and a half years. Everybody else came off, so, and so I'd like to get that addressed. On the Revere Beach Parkway near Thomasella Road, I know it's Council Penta's area, but you got two poles. you got two poles there, 41 and 51, that have been vacant for at least two or three years. And I just don't understand why those aren't addressed. The last issue that I want to bring to your attention is really a new issue, on the corner of Revere Beach Parkway and Albert Avenue. There's a pole listing right now, probably about 15 degrees into the roadway.
And that's a leaning pole on?
Yes. I don't have the number offhand, but it's right at the intersection on the Revere Beach Parkway at Albert Avenue. And what had happened was, there was a water break there about two years ago. And DPW had to do some work there. They called in your folks. They came down and held the pole up.
While they did the work?
While they did the work, but just now they've just backfilled it, and the pole's just listing, and it's right next to a water line. The last thing I want to bring up, as far as overall work on poles, it's my understanding that every contractor, every contractor, has to do a SafeDig.
DigSafe, correct.
DigSafe.
Right.
Thank you. And I can tell you that a majority of telephone poles that are being put in are replaced, do not have DigSafe markings on them. And there've been several poles that are put in that have gone through our drainlines. And I think it's imperative that you talk to your operations department and make sure that these areas get marked out, so we don't have to go and fix a broken water line or a drain line.
I will tell you, Counselor, that DigSafe is a first priority for the replacement of poles. I'm kind of surprised to hear this, but I will take it up with the operations people and make sure they're following procedure.
Please do. And I'm sure they get a, they usually get a DigSafe number.
That's correct.
And I want to make sure that that DigSafe number gets to our public works people. So they know that the areas are marked out, because I know they're supposed to go down, too.
Right.
So if they don't go, you know, if they weren't notified by DigSafe for some reason or other, that something was getting done.
I know that the city is part of DigSafe, so.
I know they're supposed to be, but I know there's, a lot of them do not have markings.
I'll find out.
Thank you. So after, thank you, Mr. President. That's all. Thanks a lot, Stan.
Thank you, Counselor Nowosowski. Counselor Samburu.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see progress here. I'm almost afraid to say it.
Well, don't.
Ten years ago, ten years ago, I put an ordinance change in. Of course, that has the caveat of trying to get around utility laws, and we know all that stuff, and so there's very little teeth you can put in these ordinances because of current laws. However, for the first time in 12 years up here, I heard these gentlemen come here with genuine progress. I'm impressed. We finally have what looks like teamwork going on here between the city and the utilities. And frankly, I'm delighted. I'm absolutely delighted that we look like we're on the same page. We're making progress. I'd like a definition of several months, but aside from that, it looks like, it looks like this thing's on the right track, finally.
Well, I think, you know, to credit the council, really.
We'll always take credits, Stan, you know that.
I understand that. The PLM system seemed to be a foreign item to the city and Fire Alarm, and I think there was a lapse there that was corrected with EnGrid and ourselves. And you're exactly right. The same page happens to be PLM, and it's only as good as those that participate in it and keep it updated and, you know, and are vigilant about it that make a difference. The reason that we're able to drop those numbers by 157 is because everybody was working off the same sheet.
Well, I'm absolutely thrilled. I am disturbed to hear my colleague say that there appears to be a problem with DigSafe numbers. I don't want to believe that that's true, that you're actually putting poles in without DigSafe. I really don't want to believe that.
I would be shocked.
Yeah, so would I. Okay, so let's, if the markings aren't dark enough, let them do them darker, so we can see them and everybody knows. I do have one specific, since everybody else is being selfish, 63 High Street. Now, I know there's still fire alarm on it, and, but just to see what the status of that is, because my neighbor keeps asking me when she can have her kids playing ball out there again. So if you can, you can help me with that one. That's all I have, Mr. President, except to say that I'm very happy tonight that I see progress.
Thank you, Counselor. Samburu, Counselor.
Counselor, if I could.
Sure.
Please contact Fire Alarm, they're still on, and then that drops into cable. So as soon as they move, cable can then take it up, and then we can.
So Fire Alarm is the next to go on?
That's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Come on.
Do that tomorrow.
Counselor Ghanasal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Stan, Dan, thank you very much for your attendance, and thank you very much for your accomplishment. The people on Cushman Ave want to thank you personally. Last time you were here, I was crazed about the amount, 17 in number for double poles. We have it down to eight, which I think is a reflection of a team effort between the City Council and yourself, gentlemen. I think that the way you've conducted this, and it's a hotly contested type of subject based on the fact that it's so unsightly. You saw us previous public hearing, we're talking about aesthetic value with those satellite dishes. We want to see the city become as nice-looking as other cities and towns, you know. You don't have to be extremely wealthy, but you just look over to our neighbors in Melrose, it seems like it. Why is Melrose so appealing with their aesthetic values? Because they don't allow 17 double poles on one street. They don't allow, on a little side street like I have, it's on my street, there's nine homes and eight double poles. That's insane. So they don't allow that. And that's why, when people go to these towns, they see a different situation. They see something occurring there that's so nice. And so through your efforts, and I think to just continue on with what you're doing, and keep coming to this council meeting with the great news that you're bearing with you today, and I think we're going to have a nicer look in town, and a nicer look in city, and it's through the strong efforts of this body and yourself, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Ghanasal, and any other councils. Seeing none, Stan and Dan, I'd like to thank both of you for coming. I just want to add one double pole, and it's funny, Winthrop Ave, they put double poles up about four, five months ago along one side of the street, and those are all down, which, so I know it can be done in a short time. But they forgot one across the street that's been up for about three years, 220 Winthrop Ave. If you could check into that one.
Yeah, it's still, it's Winthrop Avenue?
Yes.
There's a number of them.
They took quite a few down.
That are in either electric or Fire Alarm. There is one that's in our ball and court, and I'll see if that's the one I'll ask.
Let me check, it's 220, it's actually across the street from the one they took down. But I want to thank you, because I think Counselor Samburu said it, I mean, since we were discussing this, and maybe knowing you're going to come up here once a month to, maybe that's what it took to get things done, I'm not sure. But at the next meeting, I want to have the gas company up here, because trenches are another problem in this city, so.
Do I have to come for that one?
I'll have the clerk notify you, but the gas company should have been. I just want to make note that Tim Kelly did call the Clerk's Office of Comcast and could not make the meeting, so, I mean, he was aware of the meeting, but could not make it. So I just want to make that noted. Thank you again.
Thank you.
On calendar item number four, Lois Diamond, she's not present this evening, it'll be rescheduled, the presentation.
Yeah, remain on the table.
Calendar item number five, hearing called as ordered upon the application presented by Amerata Hess Corporation Care of Bowler Engineering for a permit to remove two existing tanks and replace with three new tanks for additional storage of flammableles at 630 Squire Road.
All right, before we go on, I just want to let you know that this will go to Subcommittee. All public hearings do. We are proponents and opponents first, so with that, you got the floor.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Matt Smith with Bowler Engineering here tonight on behalf of Amerata Hess for their location at 630 Squire Road. What they're looking to do is to remove some dated single-wall steel tanks, underground storage tanks, that exist on the site currently, and put in some modern double-wall fiberglass tanks, and replace some existing gasoline equipment on the site. As part of our application, we have submitted to the Fire Department full sets of plans detailing the technical specifications for the underground systems, and we actually have gotten their approval of same.
Yeah, I see that the Fire Chief approved the 148 license, so that's there, but this will still go to Subcommittee, just so you know that.
Okay. And I'm happy to answer any questions or go into anything.
Okay, that's fine. Any other proponents, people in favor? Seeing here and none, or close that side of hearing? Any opponents, people opposed? Hearing and seeing none, or close that side of hearing? Any city councils?
This goes to Subcommittee automatically?
This will go to Subcommittee, correct. Counselor Patch?
I'll hold my comments, so, Committee.
Okay, this is, we'll go to the zoning committee. The clerk will notify you when that meeting will be. You're welcome to attend, don't have to attend, and then it'll probably be taken up at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And just, if I may, one last thing. We still have the original application. Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Calendar item number six, hearing called as ordered upon the special permit application of Vincent Giacchetti of 54 Oak Ridge Terrace, Lynnfield, Mass., seeking permission from the City Council to construct a 24-foot by 48-foot billboard, not exceeding 50 feet in height, on Lot 6 at 427 Squire Road.
Okay, before we go on with this, Counselor, just to let you know that this will be going to Subcommittee also, we're there from you, and then proponents, opponents, and city councils.
Madam Clerk, if you could be so kind as to give us packages for the council? Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Revere City Council. My name is Attorney Lawrence Simeoni, 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. This evening, I represent Vincent Giacchetti of 54 Oak Ridge Terrace, Lynnfield, Massachusetts. Mr. Giacchetti seeks, in accordance with Revere Revised City Ordinance 1716250, 1724025, a special permit in order to erect a standing sign at the locus 427 Squire Road in Revere. The locus is Lot 6, consists of approximately 3.2 acres of land in the highway business district, as established in one of the exhibits that were appended to the application. The area is entirely highway business, that the 3.2 acres, along with adjacent zones, also highway business. The existing use of this particular site is multi-story hotel, which is allowed by right. The store, the particular hotel varies in height from eight stories to six stories, and then down to three stories, as you look at the particular hotel from the front and from the rear. Currently, it is a Four Points Sheraton Hotel. The present owner is Logan Hospitality Associates, LLC, and the project that seeks the relief of the special permit is an effort by the applicant and the owner, who have established a lease agreement to lease a small portion of land, approximately 500 plus or minus square feet, along that portion of Squire Road and US Route 1. The particular exhibit, Exhibit A, establishes that on that land will be a six-foot in diameter pole, which will support the standing sign. The applicant proposes to construct a two-sided billboard or standing sign. As you look at your particular handouts that I provided you, the first portion of the handout replicates the document in front of me. Basically, you can see the sign is located to the right, to the, I'm sorry, to the left and around the backside of the hotel. Its particular view, as we've proposed at this point, would be from northbound Route 95 slash US 1, and also those travelers on Copeland Circle and Squire Road, at that point where Squire intersects with Copeland. The, each side of the sign will be 24 feet by 48 feet, with a four-foot apron. The application had a submittal of the schematics of the sign. The particular schematics of the sign are here at this point, and you can see that the sign, as proposed, at this time, would be a two-sided sign. And it would approximately be about 50 feet in height, that'll be the maximum height allowable in the HB District. There'll be no variances sought on this particular application, so, but for the fact that our ordinance requires that billboards pass through your authority, there would be no seeking of any relief from the zoning law in the HB District. The applicant and the owner have not selected an end user, a particular billboard company at this time, so I cannot really speak to whether, you know, there'll be a particular user that the council is familiar with. There are several, but most of them, a couple in this area predominate the existing billboards in the area. But they have not reached any agreement with those particular vendors at this time. When we look at this particular billboard, we ask you to consider it favorably. The reasons I state that it should be considered favorably is the highway business district is a district that services those travelers and businesses along the highway. This particular district is, in this particular area, the location of the billboard is remote. There are no residential neighbors within the purview, they're well over 400, 500 feet away. There's no residential views that are blocked or overshadowed or impeded in any particular way. We've looked at this particular sighting from several different angles, from the different neighborhood sections, that are across the street from the Pizzerino Uno and the hotel, and feel that we're comfortable, at this point, that we really do not affect anybody's line of sight, or hurt anybody's property value, or in any way offend any residential owner. Rather, we look to the positive aspect of this particular sign as something that is intuitive with the commercial zone, highway business. It also presents an opportunity for the city to put tax revenue in its pockets. I have spoken to the chairman of the Board of Assessors, Mr. Andrew Ayavanna. He's indicated to me that this type of board, which is similar to the board at Plaza Garibaldi on that highway location, approved by the council not too long ago, that this particular board, at 24 and 48 feet, would be 1,152 a side, that the Board of Assessors has worked with the city of Boston and other locations as to develop a formula of assessing, so that'd be 1,152 times, $180 per square foot is what the city assesses at. That would be approximately $277,000 a side, so this board, this signed billboard would be assessed $414,780, if my eyes don't deceive me, and that should bring in approximately Now, that's a particular number that is, doesn't involve schoolchildren, doesn't involve needs for fire apparatus and a variety of public services. This particular facility is an unmanned facility. There is adequate and appropriate facilities already on the site to address this particular, the needs of this sign. At this point, I would ask you to seriously consider the proposal. I know that this is an issue that always gets great scrutiny by this council because of the neighborhood concerns. I ask you to consider the fact that Mr. Giacchetti has been a longtime Revere resident at one time, he just moved in the last few years, and his family up in Lynnfield, that he owns a business in this community, he has a reputation of doing the right thing, and also has a history of investing in this community. Those who know him as the owner of the Esquire Club and other... Those who know him as the owner of the Esquire Club and other properties that he owns knows that he is a hard-working former Revere resident. I'll stand here to answer any questions, Mr. President, as to the existing proposal or any other information that you need at this time.
Thank you. You can take a seat now. What we're gonna do is open it up to any other proponents, and if anyone else wants to speak in favor. Seeing, hearing, none, or close that side of hearing? Any opponents, people want to speak opposed? Come up to the podium? Yeah, Larry. Attorney Simeoni, do you mind taking those things, signs, not even maybe turn them to the people who can see them? Say name and address to the record, please.
Denise Solemy, 159 Gore Road, Revere. Good evening all, and it's very refreshing to see some new faces on the council, especially young ones, and I wish you lots of luck in your first term of office. It was a little over a decade ago that I sat in this very city hall chambers, and at that time I served on the zoning subcommittee with the former mayor, Ambrosino, who was then councillor Ambrosino, and we worked on the zoning subcommittee, and our goal was to rezone the entire city of Revere. It was quite a daunting task, to say the least. Our goal was to preserve and improve the fabric and aesthetic quality of neighborhoods by removing buildable postage stamp-sized lots, eliminating them, increasing sideyards and frontage measurements for new buildable lots, only to name a few. We also tried to redesignate appropriate areas for industrial use, commercial use, et cetera. In the midst of all this, I remember feeling so victorious after spending hours of negotiations with Ackley Communications and Wright Meteor, when we were successful in removing approximately a half a dozen billboards from this city. Some were located in North Revere, while others were located along Ocean Boulevard by the waterfront. Let's fast forward to today. After spending millions of dollars of funding provided by grants and other monies, we have made a brand-new revitalized beachfront. Through the efforts of the beautification committee, negotiation, mitigation features with new businesses, et cetera, we have beautifully landscaped rotaries, median strips, and during the spring and summer, hanging plants that adorn the entire Broadway area. It's so nice when people come from out of the city now to visit and marvel at the difference. In my heart of hearts, I do not understand why I'm even here tonight. After all these efforts, who would think that we would want to put back, after we so successfully removed, billboards? The meager thousands of dollars of revenue that are generated by a billboard appeals to the tens of thousands of dollars in depreciation value, in my opinion, to residential housing. And more importantly, I would be remiss if I didn't remind you of the location of this one particular billboard, which abuts the largest marshland area north of Boston. Back in the 1980s, the Environmental Protection Agency designated this area as an ACAC, an area of critical environmental concern. To this day, you can, I know, I live right down the end of the street there, and I see snowy owls sometimes in the wintertime, hawks that perch on the trees that abound that whole area. And I know that while I served in the city council, Frank Stringi in planning and community development, had long visions of revitalizing that area into a recreational area. In fact, things have improved so much from one end of the city to the other, that over, across from where the quarry once stood, we have open grass area there, all landscaped with park benches and a pond, and during the summer, it's very often I see people sitting there, reading on the benches, and in the wintertime, I have even seen young people skating on the ice there. These are all positive improvements for the city of Revere. I'm a firm believer that one billboard begets another, and another, and another. And my husband said it so perfectly when he commented, "They're like weeds. They are ugly, and they can spread so easily, yet the effort and cost to remove them can be so outrageously expensive." In closing, I would ask your honorable body to revisit this whole thing, and I think it's a travesty and an insult to everything positive that we have done to improve the quality of life of this city. And I sit here tonight, and I listen to Councillor Gonasso talk about the proliferation of the TV antennas. You know, we really need to think about what we're trying to do here. We take so many steps forward, I feel this is a step backward, and I hope that you vote against it. Thank you.
Any other, any other opponents, people opposed?
Rob DiMaggio, 325 Romney Road. Wow. I couldn't say it any better, even though I'm gonna try to at least express my concerns. Denise Solemy clearly loves this city, and I only wish that she was still representing, representing us in an elected capacity. I have a statement to make, which I'd like to just enter into the record, so I'm gonna hear, clerk, if I can get by. Yeah, that's your copy there. And just like Denise mentioned, I think it's ironic that we're here tonight, and two of the issues that preceded this issue dealt with satellite dishes and double telephone poles. And Arthur said it wonderfully. He said, "It's an eyesore. Satellite dishes are an eyesore." And I agree, you see all these satellite dishes, especially in the apartments, and, "Ah, jeez, we have to see that." And Arthur commented afterward about the telephone poles, to get rid of them, the double telephone poles, "It's so aesthetically pleasing because we want a better-looking town." That's why I'm here tonight. That's why Denise is here tonight. That's why these other people, these concerned residents, are here tonight. It's very frustrating. Before I get into reading the, my comments, I do want to touch upon something that the learned attorney mentioned. He says, "Okay, the city is gonna generate $12,635 in tax revenue." Well, I think it's funny how he neglected to mention that, as a part of the formula, there's something called depreciation. Because I also talked to the chairman of the assessor's office, and he did mention that to me, and I'll get into that further in my, in my comments, but I just wanted to mention that because, yeah, maybe it's $12,635 the first year, but what's it gonna be in year five, and in year 10, and in year 20, and in year 30? Because we know how these billboards are. Once they go up, they're virtually impossible to get down. I know I'm gonna go over my allotment in three minutes, so there's a couple here, Ralph and Jeanette DeRosa, 105 Marshall Street, and they have granted me their allotment of time, so I'll try to, okay, well, fair enough. I will try to speed.
325 people, 75 minutes.
Okay, well, again, they're kind enough to give me my, their allotment to me, and I hope you'll at least take that into consideration. And I promise, I won't be more than another three or four, maybe five minutes. Well, I'll do my best I can, so thank you for your latitude and your consideration, Mr. President. As a lifelong resident of Revere, I have serious concerns regarding the expansion of billboards in our city. Billboards provide virtually no benefit to our community, and are an eyesore and a detriment to our quality of life. There is a reason why communities actively fight against them, because there is nothing more important to living in a community than the quality of life one receives from being there. Some will argue that billboards are necessary because they generate needed tax revenue. However, the proceeds that we receive as a community are minimal in comparison to the rich rewards that it bestowed on their owners. Last week, I had the opportunity to speak with the city assessor, Andy Iovana. Mr. Iovana acknowledged that, on average, the city receives at best $3,000 to $4,000 per year from each billboard. That sum equals a measly $10 per day, which is less than the city receives from the average single-family home. For the billboards on Asti Avenue that tower over that neighborhood, the city receives just $3,300 apiece. It is incomprehensible to me that we would allow a neighborhood to suffer in exchange for such paltry sums. What's really disturbing is that prior to Mr. Iovana becoming the city assessor, we made even less money on these billboards. At that time, we were assessing their value as ordinary signs, not billboards. But thanks to his efforts, that all changed. Yet even the new way in which we value these billboards is appallingly low compared to the income they earn. It is my understanding that the average billboard can generate anywhere between $5,000 and $10,000 per month. With all that money at stake, is it any wonder that this proponent and his supporters are determined to have their way? Even if the proceeds to the city were significantly more, it wouldn't be enough to offset the detrimental harm that they cause. Residents that live across the street from this proposed billboard have been assured that they won't even see it, except from the highway. However, we've been told this by a man that doesn't have any experience erecting billboards. He's never owned one before. The same individual refused repeated requests by the city clerk to provide the most critical piece of information on the design of his billboard, which were the dimensions, until it was demanded by Councillor Redden. The legal notice appeared for two weeks in the paper, misinforming the general public that all the plans are available for public inspection, when they weren't, which only left the concerned citizenry a few days to prepare. But we're supposed to believe him? And even if you give the proponent and his supporters the benefit of the doubt, what if they're wrong? Do you think they're gonna fix it afterward? Regardless of whether the billboard can be seen from across the street, it will not be hidden from across the marsh to North Revere. Remember, this board will be massive in scale. Anyone living in North Revere whose homes overlook the marsh should feel just as threatened. We're not just talking about this one billboard. If you approve it in an area where we never had them, you will establish a bad precedent that could open the door for more, and once you open the door, it won't be easy to close. Councillor Redden, an experienced lawyer, agreed. In fact, there are additional billboards being proposed for the same area. If you allow this one and deny the next, that billboard might wind up in court, which the city can ill afford, and with our luck, some judge will approve it. Then what are you gonna tell us? Sorry, we didn't know? It's the law of unintended consequences. To further this point, everyone knows that billboards cause distractions. This billboard will be situated at a bottleneck where the lanes are reduced from three to two. It's an area that has been plagued by car accidents, and with every accident, it's our insurance rates that go up. Last week, I spoke with Frank Stringi, the director of the planning board. Mr. Stringi is one of the most honorable men to ever serve this city, and only those with ill repute would question his judgment. He expressed all kinds of reservations about this proposal, including the fact that it would abut the marshland, which is an area of critical environmental concern. Mr. Stringi mentioned that there was a time when we actually, we were actually going in the opposite direction by removing billboards. We removed, as Denise Solemy pointed out, a number of them by eminent domain, thanks to a beautification fund.
Just to the speaker, I gave you two minutes extra, so please, please sum up your remarks.
I will, thank you. And again, I appreciate your latitude, just for a couple more minutes.
Well, there's another, there's a committee meeting that'll be held in this, at another council meeting, so you have plenty of time to hear your things out.
I'm almost through, I'm almost through, Mr. President. Thank you. Which allowed, and again, the state beautification fund, which allowed municipalities to compensate billboard owners. However, that was then, and this is now. It is unfortunate that some attitudes in this council may have changed. However, that isn't the case with the citizens of this community. Over the last several days, I've gathered a petition with 75 signatures from residents and homeowners that are opposed to this project. I could have gathered 700, because not a single person I spoke with was in favor of it, not a single one. If anyone wanted to run for elected office on a campaign against billboards, they probably went in a landslide, which should concern any councillor who votes in favor of it. I think I can speak on behalf of everyone in opposition when I say that I resent the fact that we have to be here. We've had to take time out of our busy lives to deal with this nonsense, because some of you wanna keep an open mind. Keep an open mind to what? We have a right to maintain what quality of life is left in this area, and that includes looking out our window, whether from our home or driving in our car, and not having to stare at something ugly. I challenge any customer that supports this proposal to defend their decision. I want you to answer the question, how will this billboard benefit our community? I've already refuted any notion about tax revenue, so what other reason could there be? Well, I'll let others speculate. Billboards do have a place in our community. When proposals came forth to erect them on Route 1A, I didn't object. It's an industrial area surrounded by the oil farms and not residences. And what's ironic is that the proponent, Mr. Giacchetti, owns a bar in that area, as was pointed out earlier. Yet instead of him proposing a billboard there, he wants to put it in a neighborhood that doesn't want it. What's even more disturbing is that Mr. Giacchetti doesn't live in Revere, he lives in Linfield. Mr. Giacchetti's attorney, Mr. Simeoni, who spoke in favor of this proposal, lives in Bauxford.
All right, I'm asking that.
Does anyone think, just another moment, and I'll finish up, and I appreciate it.
Next speaker, next speaker.
Thank you.
You're getting off the beaten path here, too.
Does anyone think that there's a billboard within miles of Great Pond Drive in Bauxford?
You had eight minutes, sir, you're going on nine. I'm asking you, please, to respect the council, okay?
Mr. Giacchetti, I understand, and I'm just finishing up, I'm summing up right now. If Mr. Giacchetti and Mrs. Simeoni feel so strongly that billboards are a great idea, I would encourage them to put them where they live, but something tells me that'll never happen. In closing, and thank you, Mr. President, for your latitude and consideration, I really appreciate it. In closing, more than one person mentioned to me that they thought there was a moratorium on billboards in Revere. Perhaps there was when George Colletta was alive. Councillor Colletta was the most outspoken critic of billboards, because he loved this city, and understood the harm that they caused, but he's gone now. I know many of you on this council long admired and respected Mr. Colletta, therefore I would ask you to look over your shoulder at his photo prior to casting your vote, and think about his legacy. Don't do his legacy a disservice by voting in favor of this. I think you owe him, the residents, and our community more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Amanda Leo, 701 Washington Ave., Revere. I'm a believer on one billboard leads to another, and we want to revitalize the city, as Mr. Gonasso said, and billboards do not help the city of Revere to achieve these goals. I'm against this billboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ron Champeau, I live at 88 Stevens Street, Revere, directly across from, down the street from the Sheraton. I actually took somebody's advice, I took a ride down to see where they would be placing this billboard this evening, and I know exactly where the billboard's gonna be placed, but my issue is this, as Arthur had said, aesthetically, where are we going in this city? As some people know here, I'm a member of the beautification committee. We're going down a road, we're trying to change the look of this city. When I came home this evening, I passed by the Park Street Bridge, the Park Street overpass on Route 1. I counted five gigantic billboards to the exit that goes to Copeland Circle. I think enough is enough. I think we've lived that life. We've gone down that road, gentlemen, ladies. We've gone down that road. We need to look ahead. We're a changed city. $11,000, $12,000, it's a significant amount, it could be depreciated, whatever, but what is the cost to the community? The cost to the community is greater, greater than $10,000 or $12,000. It does depreciate the value of your home. Anybody who doesn't think that's a reality is being disingenuous to themselves. I ask you to look at this issue, and really think about the future for us, for all of us. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other opponents, people opposed?
Jeanette DeRosa, 105 Marshall Street, Revere, Massachusetts.
And Ralph DeRosa.
Last Sunday evening, I called each and every councillor that's sitting here, and I asked if they could please oppose this issue. I live on Marshall Street. The way my house is situated is, it runs, how do you explain it, on my lot, so it runs, it doesn't run like a ranch home, it runs, how do you explain?
You know, towards the street, but you can see the whole highway.
Okay, so out of my side window, I face the Four Point Sheraton Hotel, and I'm opposed to it for that particular reason. I don't think aesthetically it's good for the city. Years ago, when we were starting to build our home, someone wanted to put, I was living in East Boston, I had four children at the time, and they wanted to put a 12-unit apartment building across the street from my home. Here I am, building, my husband was building a one-family home, and I went and I appealed to the councillors that were there, and thank be a God, it never happened. So I'm hoping and praying that each and every one of you will consider the fact, if it were close to your home, and something that you could see day in and day out. So I appreciate having the time to talk. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing, to the best of my knowledge, I might be wrong here, but I think freedom of expression, I think, once that goes up, who knows what they're gonna put on there, that the council or the citizens may not approve of, and they can say, "Well, you know, we, we're paying for it, we can advertise freedom of expression." So that's another consideration to take. I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing, hearing, none, all vote to city councils. Council Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. Being the ward six councillor, having, having this in my location, first of all, it's good to see Denise again. If it were for Denise, I wouldn't be here. And I know she's genuine, and it comes from the heart, what she says, and, but, you know, this- And, but, you know, this is a democracy, and I do, I do have an open mind when it comes to, to issues. And I have not made any decision on, on this. And I, as the, Mr. Dari, Mr. Dari? I do know that he has worked hard to, against this, and I don't know if he's so genuine, genuine. He did put out an ad to put fear in the people of the residents of Ward Six. And, and I don't believe that the information on that ad was correct. You know, and fear does some funny things. You know, I've been around it four years in the Marines, and 32 years in the police department, and five years on this council. And I like a, I like a democracy. And if a businessman comes forward, we take every issue one at a time. And I do know that Mr. Dari owns a business of 41 Marble Street, and they were trying before Christmas to put a billboard in across the street from 41 to Marble Street. And I had, I was approached, being the Ward Councilor, to, to vote in, for favor of it and get the council, being the Ward Councilor, to vote in favor of that billboard. And I actually knew these people that were going to lease this land or buy it from the owner of 41 Marble Street, to put up the billboard. And I just want to say that, in talking to some of the neighbors, I went to these people, and I told them that no way would I be a favor of putting a billboard on Marble Street. It's a residential area. And so that's why, when he has, when he has in his pamphlet, you know, more billboards, more billboards, where was he when this was, issue was around? Why, is he, is he hoping this one fails because maybe that one can be granted? I don't know. But I do question his, his reason for this. Again, I, it's going to go to committee, and I have an open mind, I know Ron from the beautification, I talk to him frequently, and I have a lot of friends that are against this. So, again, there's a big difference where they're going to put this billboard, if you, if people would actually go down and see where this is going to be. Now, I have, I have some new information that I got, which is good. And I am going to go over that, and we'll, we'll go over it in committee, and we'll, we'll take it from there. But I want to thank all the people from Ward Six for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Patch, Council Redden.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the chairman of the zoning subcommittee, and also someone who likes to listen to all the information, I normally don't comment on these things until after all the information has been presented, and tonight will be no different. I would like to take exception to the one speaker's suggestion that I had indicated that I had a concern about one billboard begetting another. I don't believe I've ever said that, and if, if, if I was misunderstood, I apologize. One thing I know is that this city council's job is to determine what is good and what is bad, and not just whitewash everything with a, with a, with a single paintbrush. And I know that we consider applications such as this on their, on their merits, and consider all of the information. And I, for one, am not interested in a proliferation of billboards by any way, shape, or form. However, there obviously are places where they are more appropriate than others. We, you don't have to go much further than a, a, a drive down that one-mile stretch from, from the circle there at Squire Road, all the way down to Route 16, to find that there's three or four other billboards far more intrusive than what's planned here from what I can see. And again, I'm not commenting on this one way or the other as to whether I favor it or disfavor it, but again, I don't believe necessarily that, that consideration, consideration of this necessarily tends to proliferate other, more invasive and obtrusive signs. And that, that I did not say, and that I do not think. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Redden. Council Zambuto.
Thank you, Mr. President. I never make any decisions up here before I have all the information. However, one of the reasons this goes to the zoning subcommittee and doesn't get voted on the same night was because of my motion to change the ordinance, that there's never a special permit voted on the same night. Because not only can you vote on something without having all the facts, and something, something that sneaks up on you is already there when the permit's granted. You might get caught up in a motion, and what I consider distortion. This flyer is a distortion of the facts. Now, a close friend of mine, someone who's worked on my campaign his, my whole political career, called me, happens to live on Keny, and, and said, what about these billboards that are going up on Squire Road? I said, what, what are you talking about, Nick? He said, and he started reading this propaganda, started reading this propaganda, this scare sheet, to me over the phone. And I explained to him that there's one billboard that I know of that's proposed, and I hadn't made a decision on it, but at first glance, it appears to be in an appropriate place that I would normally vote for billboards, because I vote for billboards when they're in an appropriate place, when they're not in the neighborhood, when they're not intruding on anybody's property. Now, I will say, at this subcommittee meeting that will be coming up soon, I would like some of these people to bring factual data with their statements that they're making here tonight, that property values are devalued when a billboard goes on a highway. I want to see those statistics, okay? Because there are appropriate places for billboards, and there are inappropriate places. Neighborhoods are inappropriate. But this kind of campaign, this is a beautiful piece of marketing, unfortunately, it's a lie. It's untrue. And, and, and there's not three giant billboards proposed, as shown on this piece of paper. If I got this, I'd be frightened by it. There's nobody proposing to do that, and I dare say that would never get by this council, not as long as I'm on it. But again, I'll save my comments for the, my, the rest of my comments for the zoning subcommittee meeting, but I hope that we're going to deal in factual data at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zambuto. Any other councilors?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Let me just plug a personal per click for one second. I am not affiliated with that flyer in any way, shape, or form. I am here to...
I don't think, I don't think you said Denise Schure. I think whoever put it out is referring to, and the person knows who put it out, so they can take that.
I don't want to misguide the viewers at home.
Mr. President, if Ms. Slemi thought I was referring to her, I apologize. I have utmost respect for her, always did, as a city councilor, and as someone that loves the city as I do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just sum up a couple remarks, and this will go to committee. One, and Denise, I refer to you, I was on the council when they took those billboards down. The reason they took those billboards down, because I was on the council, was because they put a couple up in areas that they said would be where billboards should go, and the ones who were there for years in neighborhoods, they would take down. So there was a trade-off there, to take billboards down, to put billboards in areas that were out of sight in highways, or whatever, whatever reason. But they took those down for that reason. I believe they took down four or six of them, and they put one or two up. But that to be said, but, you know, I seen that flyer too, and I was taken back from it. The first thing on it says the planning board denied it. The planning board has to deny it. Anybody goes in front of the planning board for any such thing, to put up without a special permit, appropriate, automatically, it's, it's just, that's what they do. No opinion, no nothing on it. So right there, whoever put that flyer out, and they know who it is, you know, I think the council said it's being disingenuous, because you put a scare tactic out there. As Council Patch said, he came to me before someone was trying to put one on Marble Street, four or five months ago. He talked to the council, absolutely no. And maybe those people are part of it, because they couldn't get theirs, but here's one. Now, I'm looking at a picture here, and a couple people did call me up on Marshall Street and another street. I took a ride by there Sunday, took a ride in back of the building where the billboard's going, stood there, looked to see what houses I could see. I went across the street at those houses, and looked to see if I could see this billboard, where it's proposed. No. Can't see it. So, you know, where one billboard goes, another one goes. $12,000 may not be a lot. Over a period of time, it's 300, $400,000. You build two houses in this city, you don't raise 6, $7,000, you don't raise $12,000. Two houses. Plus, you have kids going to school, we're probably losing $4,000, $5,000 with the tax revenue. Attorney Simeoni, you had your say.
Yeah, no, I just want to correct the record. The matter's never been before the Revere Planning Board.
I know that.
Okay. What I think the pamphleteer was dealing with was site plan review.
I understand that. And they have to deny it too, via the special permit process.
Site plan review does not have the authority to deny or accept. So that's for the record.
Counsel, I know that.
Thank you.
Thank you. But just to go to a couple things. One gentleman said, you know, you put a billboard about what's going to be advertised on it. Yes, this council can put something on it, you cannot put vulgar words, maybe not alcohol, you, you could do that. That, that could be something, a condition to put on it. But as far as one generating another, and another, and another, it's not the case. You've got 10 Dunkin' Donuts here, does that mean, you know, you're going to put one on a side street? No. So, I mean, it's, it's, and I feel for the people in the neighborhood that got that flyer in the mail, because I would have been upset if I got one too. And right away, I would have called every city council up and everything else, and probably said things I didn't want to say to them. So with that being said, it's going to go to zoning subcommittee. Anybody in the public has a right to attend those meetings, to bring up. And any Council Zambuto said, an assessment, this billboard brings down one house assessment, I'd quit the council if that was the case. Because if anybody's seen where this billboard's going and not being seen, if this reduces anybody's assessment of the house, that is the most ridiculous thing I've probably heard here tonight. So there is probably no proof of that, especially where this billboard is. With that being said, this will go to the zoning subcommittee. Thank you.
Calendar item number seven, hearing called is ordered upon the application of National Grid requesting permission to construct a line of underground electrical conduits on Ocean Avenue.
All other proponents?
Good evening. My name is John Jankowski from National Grid. My address is 170 Medford Street in Walden, Mass. The petition that you have to request from the MBTA is to put a footbridge over Ocean Ave. Obviously, there'd be a conflict with our facilities on Ocean Ave. Normally, we would just siphon down under the bridge, and then pass it, rise up. But the area near the Sagamore Street area, there's only one feed, it'd be a, a potential, a radial feed, in other words. If this cable failure fails, we can't pick it up. So that's why we have to siphon on two poles and rise up on two poles. Okay? We'll have an X and Y cable. X will be closed, Y will be open. So if X closes, we'll pick it up on the other one.
Any other proponents? Hearing, seeing none, we'll close that side of hearing. Any opponents? Hearing, seeing none, we'll close that side of hearing. Any city councils? Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Jankowski, I just heard you mention the word Sagamore Street. How does Sagamore Street play into this?
Oh, no, I'm just saying, we're, on the petition that's out, that's all I'm just saying.
Okay, all right. So this, this is, has no way affecting Sagamore Street?
Not at all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Novoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is an integral part of the TOD at the Wonderland site, and I hope we can vote on this tonight, and hope everybody will vote on it.
I don't know by our rules if we can.
This weekend.
This is not a special permit? Okay, corrected, Ron. I have no problem with voting on it tonight. I mean, it's, you know, keep that project going as quick as possible. Move the question, roll call.
On the application for underground conduits on Ocean Avenue, Councilor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Redden.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambuto.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Penta.
Yes.
Yes, permission has been granted.
Thank you.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the city clerk relative to the warrant calling for the state presidential primary on Tuesday, March 6, 2012.
We will play some file. I'll, I'll approve, so.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the planning director relative to the community development block grant program.
Should this be read? Mr. President, instead of reading it, the reason I put this motion in is with the CD GB grant from the federal government, was always in the past $600,000. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't divert money away from the groups that would normally receive at the sidewalks in the city, the streets in the city, et cetera. I was not aware, for some reason, that Mayor Ambesino included this in the five-year plan. So that satisfied my needs. As long as no group outside that would normally get this money, nonprofit, et cetera, would really be harmed in any way, they will not be.
Well, I, I think, talking to the city planner, I believe we got cut from the state where the funding comes from, so.
Right.
Trust me, we wish we got the whole thing this year, but we didn't.
Exactly. I'm just trying to protect the nonprofit out there, and the people who normally share, you know, beach, mountain area, et cetera, the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Place on file. I'll favor all the opposed, so.
Calendar item number 10, communication from William Bell relative to a certain bill filed by Representative Provost proposing a 28-cent gasoline tax increase.
I do not see him in the audience. Place on file.
Calendar item number 11, communication from Ed O'Hara requesting that the Honorable Revere City Council support the result of the non-binding ballot question concerning ethanol transportation via railway.
Council, Council O'Hara, I thank you for being so patient out there.
Mr. President, Council Zanino and gentlemen, I'd like to read a few points to you, and hopefully you can help me resolve this problem. As you are aware, a non-binding ballot question appeared on the November 2011 ballot. Basically, the question was, do you, the people of Revere, oppose or support the transportation of ethanol by rail tank car through our densely populated city en route to Global Petroleum Corporation located on 140 Lee Burbank Highway in Revere to blend with gasoline? The result of the ballot question was overwhelming. More than 80% of those who voted were recorded in opposition to the transportation of this volatile chemical through our city. The ballot question, question result was supported and recorded by the majority vote in all six wards. These bold concerned citizens are your constituents, and they have spoken. Mayor Rizzo, in a pre-election interview with Jim Mitchell of the Revere Advocate, was asked, do you support or oppose the ethanol trains? Mayor Rizzo, now Mayor Rizzo, replied, I have no personal choice, I must support the large majority of people who oppose the ethanol trains. I'm here this evening to ask for your support on behalf of the people of Revere. As you know, a public hearing has been scheduled, requested by Mayor Ambesino, to be held by the Department of Environmental Protection on March 8, 2012, at the Revere City Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. The purpose of the hearing is a request by Global Petroleum Corporation for a license application requesting a waterways license at their site. I am here tonight to urge this city council to go on record in support of your constituents, who by majority vote rejected these ethanol trains slicing through our community. I ask one or more of you to present a motion tonight, to be voted upon tonight, supporting the question ballot result. the question ballot results. If a vote is taken and passed by your Honorable Abadi, I then ask for a motion for immediate consideration, hoping would not prevail. And that's why I'm here this evening.
Counsel, thank you for that, you know, and I know, that was a non-binding thing put on the ballot.
Non-binding, yes.
You know that the state is, has that 91E coming up. I believe they switched it up.
I didn't, I kind of answered.
The state is running that meeting on 91E, and they think it was changed to the 5th, is that correct?
December 8. I mean, March 8.
March 8.
March 8, right.
Twenty-nine.
That is a, that's a total different matter, really.
Correct. Well, I'm just saying, in the federal government, the only thing I'm, I'm going to say with this is, I'm, I'm going to ask if we could, I'm going to send this to the Legislative Affairs Committee, so this thing can be drafted up to the meeting. But he, he'll probably have it next week, I would think. So, and then we'll take it from there. I mean, that's just something would-
Well, one, basically, basically, Mr. President, the reason why I'm here is I'd like to go and appear before that March 8 hearing in hand with a vote of the city council indicating that they support the non-binding ballot question. That's all I'm asking for. And I might add, shortly after that meeting, it is my intention, along with the election commissioner, to prepare the letters to the various entities that appeared on the ballot question, and that'd be the federal government, the administrators, and the governor, and so forth and so on. So the voter, I don't want to really go and say that I can't get a vote out of the city council. That's, that's all I'm concerned about.
No, and I'm saying is, I think, next, I mean, could you have the meeting the 5th? I mean, it's a non-binding resolution, basically. I mean, the chairman of, I understand it's non-binding. That's why I'd rather go to Legislative Affairs first, which-
We could have it the 5th. We could have it the 5th.
You have the 5th?
Yeah.
All right. Schedule a meeting for Legislative Affairs, March 5.
When will that be?
March 5, this Monday.
And, and will-
Six o'clock.
Where will that be, Counselor?
Right here.
At what time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock on the 5th?
On the 5th.
That's fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Movements.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Councilors Correggio and Guanasso that the mayor instruct the chief of police to conduct surveillance on Malden Street between midnight and 6:00 AM from 2 Malden Street to New Hall Street. Recently, there have been numerous house breaks in the area.
Council Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Within the past several weeks, there's been numerous house breaks in the Malden Street area. One particular house was broken into twice within three weeks. We need some heavy surveillance in the area. They're breaking into houses between 12:00 midnight and probably 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning. That area, in the Malden Street area, from 2 Malden Street down to New Hall Street, almost into Ward Six, it hasn't been really any major house breaks over the years. It's a close-knit neighborhood, and all of a sudden, they're getting hit hard with house breaks. So a matter of public safety for the residents and their property. We need some heavy police surveillance between 12:00 midnight and 6:00 in the morning in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Correggio, Council Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. The obvious is that there's a need for police surveillance in the area. Police records will show the data that there's been numerous house breaks within the area. Warranting the sanctions of Council Correggio and myself, we got together and collectively organized a crime watch meeting for this Wednesday at 7:00 at the Lincoln School. This is just to alleviate some of the concerns to some of the homeowners as to the do's and don't do's of public safety. And I urge everybody to attend this particular meeting, and it's a Ward Three event, by the way. This is strictly for Ward Three. This is not a citywide event. We, we look for input from everybody, and everybody's welcome to be there. But this is a neighborhood issue that I think you get more results with crime watch, with breaking up, pining the areas of the particular wards, and servicing that particular need at that time. And I think that's been the, from the day-one crime watch program, that's been the most successful in the way they handle it. But I just urge everyone to be in this meeting. We will have possibly the mayor, the acting chief, and we also have Officer Salvetti, who versed very extremely on this. And he has literature, and I have a couple of Ward Three residents who operate the Ward Three crime watch program, Lena and Anatolus. They'll be there with data and, and information for, for those who are in attendance. But I urge everyone to be there, because this is just a little step in helping to prevent people from breaking into your homes, and we're going to show you how that can be prevented. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think it's a great motion. I have one, the crime watch group in the Ward One area, and they're very active. Eileen Munnes and Jamie.
I know that.
They're very active, and I tell you, they've, they've accomplished a lot of good things for the area.
We've asked them to come, if they wish to come, and be part of it, but this is a Ward Three event, and we're going to make sure that the people of Ward Three are really up to, up to space in, in what we're trying to do here.
Under motion, all in favor, all opposed, so.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councilors Correggio and Guanasso that the mayor request the Department of Planning and Community Development to include Prince Street on the capital improvement, street and sidewalk repaving list as a matter of public safety.
Council Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I was on Prince Street the other day, talking to some neighbors. Was good weather, walking around, and a lot of them brought it to my attention that the street has never been repaved for over 20 years. There's numerous potholes that have been repatched and repatched. The street definitely needs to be repaved. There's a lot of children in that area. So the bottom line is, is that the safety has it also to the, to the area. So hopefully, that'll get on the capital improvement list, and we can get the street repaved sometime, you know, during the summer or the spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Guanasso.
It's the tag team tonight, Correggio, Guanasso.
Too much went out this week somewhere.
What's happening is, we were visiting the areas of the drop for this particular meeting that we're having for crime watch, so on a beautiful winter day. So presidents express concerns about other matters, too, so we want to make sure that their Prince Street is put into the capital improvement program. Thank you, Mr. President.
You are a prince. Under motion, all in favor, all opposed, so.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Councilor Haas that the mayor request a representative from the MWRA to appear before the city council to explain why and how the water and sewer rates have increased, and what we can do as individuals and representatives of the city to keep the rates under control. Over the years, the city and the MWRA simply cannot afford to charge these rates.
Council Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. When the MWRA was first organized way back when, we all expected water rates and sewer rates to increase. But at what cost? This has been going on for now 15 or 20 years with no end in sight. The MWRA, I believe, just jacks up the rates, they buy the best of the equipment, which they need, without question. But there has to be some sort of end in sight, because our taxpayers, and the taxpayers in the district, cannot afford these rates. Someone approaching the real estate tax bills, as strange as it may seem, senior citizens are strapped to making decisions between, are we going to be able to afford an evening out compared to the water rates? Because as we all know, the water is, say, $100, and the sewage is three times that. I think it's prohibited, and I'd like to get the commissioner, the director here, to explain when this may subside to some extent, because we cannot allow this to happen. We in the city side also, we created a stabilization fund, which is a great opportunity to do work we don't have funds for. But I think at this point in time, we have to really assess the MWRA rates and our stabilization rates, because the citizens of Revere cannot afford to pay these fees. Thank you.
Under motion, all in favor, all opposed, so.
Before we leave tonight and adjourn, there's no other late motions. Just want to let the council know, the mayor is going to set it up, probably reverse 9/11 this Saturday, 2:00 at the council chambers, if you can make it. It's another, it's on the gambling mitigation. Do you want to have one more for the city, for people that could not make the Ward, all the Ward different ones we have throughout the area? But they want everybody's input, so if anybody could make it at 2:00 Saturday, it's basically open to the public and as far the public to come up here and give us what their issues and concerns may be, what they're looking for mitigation. So that'll be 2:00 Saturday, March 3. With that being said, motion to adjourn. All in favor, all opposed, so.